It's 5:30. We'll call the meeting to order. Thank you for everybody for coming, so let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have an additional agenda item, which is under number seven. We'll make that G, which is All Wheels Night request. So we're going to add that to the agenda. And then with that, I have something that I would like to do. One of the things that occurred in February was the fact that we started our search for a new city manager. And during that time, we asked Kelly if she would step to the plate there for us and keep us going until such time as we had a new city manager in place. And that, of course, occurred June 8th, when Craig became available to us. So one of the things that the Commission wanted to do is because of the inheritance of actually two jobs that Kelly took on, that of the city manager and assistant city manager with all her other duties, we know as Commissioners that she was spending numerous hours, late hours, up at the office, sometimes nine, 10 o'clock, sometimes I'd get emails at late, and putting Commission packets together and all that stuff caused those hours to really build up. So because of that, we thought we'd honor her, so if I could have Gary and Leonard please come up here. So in appreciation for Kelly's commitment to the community and commitment to the city and commitment to city staff, we'd like to present her with a plaque that's a condemnation with special appreciation that goes to Kelly for above and beyond efforts performing duties as Acting City Manager from January through May 2017. So Kelly, would you please come up here? Let's get in front of this thing so they can get a way. There's the plaque. We want to thank you for going above and beyond the call of duty. So there you go. And I would open the floor up. Other Commissioners, if you have any comments, there you go. Couldn't have done without you. Thank you very much.
I really appreciate all your work.
Thanks. Well, I want to thank our staff, because without our great staff, we couldn't have gotten through it. And especially David and our department heads and supervisors and all our line employees, we have a great, great, great crew. We couldn't have done everything we did without them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's always fun when you get to recognize somebody that's done a nice job for you and kept things going. We are now ready.
We have to, need you guys to make a motion to accept the amended agenda.
Would there be a motion to accept the amended?
I make a motion. We accept the amended agenda.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Mike. I thought about that and then I forgot about it. Okay, executive sessions. We do have an executive session. We're going to take it right now. And I move that we recess for executive session for consultation with the Attorney for the City of Independence, which would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship. This is per Kansas State Statute 75-4319-B-2. The subject to be discussed is a potential litigation matter which may arise from the previous claim made against the city. We need 15 minutes for this executive session. In it will be the city attorney, the Commissioners, and I'm going to ask Kelly and Mike to be in there. Are we good with that? Yeah. Okay.
Fifteen minutes, and I've got 5:35 now.
We will be returning to open meeting at 5:35 PM.
No, it would be 5:50.
5:50, I'm sorry. 5:50 PM in here at the Veterans Room. Would there be a second?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll be back. Okay, we're back in open session. Continue with the agenda. We have appointments next. We have two appointments for three-year terms to fill the ones that expired July 1st, 2017. We had four applications. It's one of these situations to where you wish you could appoint all four, but that does, it's not the way it works. Therefore, and I thank everybody for applying, but I'd make a motion to appoint Mark Coder and Alex Oric to the three-year terms on the park board. Would there be a second?
May I ask a question of the attorney? Sorry, this is my niece he's about to appoint. Is that, do I need to abstain or recuse myself?
I don't think it's a per se conflict under the Code of Ethics. It's a little more hard, difficult to read.
Yeah. A little dicey.
Under the state statute, I don't think it would be a conflict.
So would there be a second?
Unless you're married to your niece.
That would be weird.
I'll make a second motion.
I'm going to recuse myself.
All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. The second appointment is to the Tree Board. It's consisting of a two-year term that expired June 1st. We had one application. The applicant does not live within the city limits, therefore does not technically qualify. So we're not going to be able to make that appointment this evening, so we'll continue to open it up. Kelly, what do you think, through August 15th this time?
Yeah, see if we can get some more applicants.
Yeah, see if we can, if you know anybody that would be willing to serve, I wish individual that had applied would be, was in the city. So we'll extend that then to August 15th and look at filling that position hopefully after then. All right? Next is the consent agenda. Those appropriations? Any questions, anybody?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, next is public hearings. Public hearing regarding the proposed loan in the amount of $3,100,000 to be taken by the city from the Kansas Water Pollution Control revolving loan fund, and consider setting a second public hearing for 5:30 PM September 14th, 2017 regarding this proposed loan. Therefore, I open the hearing for comments by anybody. Any comments? Okay. Therefore, I close the hearing and...
Is it appropriate for our comments now?
Yes.
Yeah, if you have any comments, Michael Bailey is here from Trans Systems to answer any questions.
Okay, I guess we leave the hearing open then.
If you're going to discuss any further...
Yeah, we'll leave the hearing open then. Go ahead.
Looking at what we've applied for or listed, there's still some information that we haven't resolved on our rate study to see how our rates are going to have to be adjusted just for what we're operating at now. And you look at the, if this loan is similar to the KDHE loan we have for $4 million, the payoff is out 40 years on it. When you look at some of the projects, the life expectancy of some of them isn't 40 years. So why are we going to be paying for something that's already wore out? You know, I think the whole process, we need to look a little more in depth before we actually secure or take the money. Some of the information we need on its effect on our current rate study, I know you've given us some rough figures, but actually, where are we going to be with our rate study that, how can we maybe do some of the projects by modifying our rate study without getting a grant? None of the projects are emergency like we're facing at the water treatment plant, but you know, I'm concerned with taking a 40-year loan on something that might have a life of 15, 20 years. You look at the Birdie Street lift station, it wasn't 40 years old and it totally had to be replaced. So, you know, before we actually commit to borrowing the money or applying projects under it, I think there's some other options we need to investigate before we proceed.
And this public hearing is just that first step of going, you know, just having this public hearing tonight, you're not, the city's not, you know, tied into this loan. We haven't filled out that application. You know, we have to have this and then have a second public hearing 30 days, you know, from when it's set today before we even get to that loan application. So that's still the information that we can, we can work through.
Yeah, I understand. That's why I wanted to bring it up now and not wait till the second. And I think I've shared some concerns with that, with the city manager, and I just wanted to make sure we're, we're looking at our projects so we don't commit to a payment on something that's going to be wore out while we're still making payments. You know, you look at the payment on the current $4 million loan, I think we're like $107,000 a year to pay it off and for 40 years. So, you know, where are we going to be total on the combined loan?
And that's something, you know, me and Sean can work through and get back to you with that information.
Okay, thank you. That was...
Be something we can address except on September 14th. Great point, though.
Can they make larger payments if they wish to? Do you know?
That I don't know. I mean, I can, Sean would know.
To shorten that term but still take advantage of the low interest? Is that a possibility, do you know?
We'd have, Sean would know that for sure.
Okay. I know sometimes on these loans, they'll give you forgiveness too, like the next one they've given us like $540,000 forgiveness. So there's some other advantages of using this program sometimes too.
There are, except, you know, my, just my concern is having equipment wore out and we're still making payments or, you know, have to keep going back.
Right. But if you had the option to make higher payments, then, then you could shorten that term if you so desired to structure it that way.
Okay. Comments, Gary? Okay. Close the hearing then. Have the option to have the, set the September 14th, 2017 date for the next public hearing, which should be the second one, and that's the final one, correct? That would be the final one?
Uh, yes.
To execute the loan?
Right.
Okay. Then, or we can wait a little longer, maybe we'll get the information we need, move forward it seems like would be appropriate. So would there be a motion then to set the next public hearing for September 14th, 2017 at 5:30? So moved. Second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Next is a request from Levi Smith to accept the donation of a vacant lot in the 600 block of South 16th Street.
Yeah, Mayor, you have in your packets a plat or picture of where that lot sits. And as mentioned, Mr. Smith is out of state, wishes to donate it. Our recommendation is that we do not accept that donation. Otherwise, we'd be maintaining it and...
That'd just cost us money.
Right.
Without any questions? So I would move then that we deny the request to accept the donation of the property from Levi Smith in the 600 block of South 16th Street. Would there be a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item B is consider authorizing the Fourth Amendment to the KWPCRF loan agreement.
Again, Mr. Michael Bailey is here from Trans Systems if you have any questions on this. This is, you've probably seen before, this is the Fourth Amendment, and it is a very favorable one for the city. So if you have any questions, Michael can answer those.
Forgiveness is in the amount of $540,240.
Yeah, that won't be in, that's not in this amendment, it's the next one, but this amendment reduces the semi-annual loan repayment by about $40,200 or so.
Okay. Questions?
On the total loan, have we secured up to the $4 million?
No, right now, as it kind of shows in your packet, you're, there's still $246,000 remaining in that loan. Sean does have the additional items that will go on this loan, and he's reviewing those now, and those will go in Amendment 5, which will close this loan out totally. So those will be in the next amendment. This is just, as you've done, you know, three previous times, you know, something they go through every 12 to 18 months to, you know, equal out the schedule. And like this, this time, they're, you know, forgiving the $540,000 in principal there. So...
Do the amendments come just at the time of payment or modifying for payment?
What do you term that?
It's just kind of something they do annually or like every, every, every year. So, you know, with this one, it's coming to a close, so there'll be, like I said, one more, and that'll be done. Just to kind of, because they're, you know, the city, the state could have hundreds of these throughout the state, so some will overrun, some will underrun, they kind of move, it's just one big pot of money they can move around. So it's just kind of, it's kind of like your checkbook, they kind of balance it out.
When we were looking at some of the Treasurers' reports, there were, looked like the funds for, for this loan, we had completed projects, we hadn't drawn down money from the loan to cover. This is separate from that drawdown amount. Is, am I correct?
I'm not sure which drawdown amount you're talking, some of those...
As we did the projects under the loan, we expended the money for the project, but then in our reporting, and there was some confusion, Jim was trying to get it worked out of how the loan operated, so, you know, it didn't reflect that we had received or applied for the loan money from KDHE to cover the project.
I think there was something there that, that you guys hadn't asked for that, for that reimbursement. I think that was something that came through not too long ago that's been working, in the process right now.
But what we're looking at tonight is a separate issue with the grant, correct, or the loan?
Yeah, I mean, it'll all encompass it, and in the end, I mean, that could be part of that $540,000 forgiveness of something where you guys didn't ask for reimbursement there.
I guess what I'm asking, we don't have to do an amendment every time we request, but the amendment is a separate step in the loan? Okay.
So, Michael, on this, if there are requests that still need to be made from previous projects that are in there, and Leonard, I don't know if this is where you're going, can they still be requested once this Fourth Amendment is done?
I would say yes, and I think that some of those are, are there additional beyond what Sean has received to review?
So there were two items, I believe, that he was identifying one and we found a different one.
And that's something we can sit down and discuss, because they're still...
It's in the dollar amount that's reflected.
Okay. Okay. So to me, it's, it's been reflected in the loan, but like I said, even if it's not in this amendment here, there will be one more to clean up any, any that are left over there. So there's, there's one more that'll go through and it'll, it'll finalize everything on this loan. Should equal everything out that you've requested on these projects.
Like on the, I think the last Treasurer's report, it showed maybe $2.5 million that we had actually received, that we'd completed projects and, you know, that's been really hard, there's been so much going on with Mike getting things going that, and it seemed like even with, with Jen, the application process was hard to, to cover and make sure we were current. And then, you know, it's like, we got the, the application to receive money, and then we've got the amendment and the understanding if they're separate or tied together.
So the schedule for payment that, on schedule that's in the packet here, that'll should reflect at some point after we approve this, that $540,000 reduction in the principal amount, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Which then reduces our payment basically $4,500 for the year.
Yeah, it's kind of a way to spell it on the, on the front page, it does reduce your payment there. So...
Okay. Other questions?
No.
Entertaining motion then to authorize the mayor to sign the Amendment Number 4 loan agreement with the KWPCRF. So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next is consider an ordinance amending Ordinance 4189 pertaining to procedures and fees for production of open records.
Yeah, Mayor, this is a language drafted by the city attorney, hopefully to get our ordinance in line with the AG's office. I'll turn it over to Jeff if you have any questions, and maybe he can explain it further on exactly what the changes are.
Do you have any questions? I, I will say this, that the ordinance that we have now was put in place about six or eight years ago, I can't remember. I think, Tony, I know was city clerk, I think Mickey had just arrived, and before that, the ordinance copy fee was 50 cents. And that was pretty high, so they asked us to look at it, and Tony and I did. And at the time, this was, I don't know, right after Mickey first got here, there was a company or one or more companies out of state that would make records requests that involved quite a few pages. And, and you charged them 50 cents a page, and they wanted it emailed to them electronically. And the thought was that wasn't fair to them to charge them that much. So that's where the computer fee came in. We actually adopted that to reduce the charge to a category of requesters. And this was at a time where not many people were making requests, and not many people, when they did make requests, one of them emailed. Most people wanted a specific document, they'd come in and just get a copy. But we reduced the per-page to 25 cents and then added the computer fee to make it cheaper for the bulk. Well, as time went on, email became more popular, the requesters became more frequent, and a lot of requesters, one of them emailed, and then the flip side is, it's, if you only want like five pages and you want them sent via email, it's really not fair to charge $25 for that. So we've, we've been talking about this for several months, and, and in the June, I'd sent, I had some back-to-back vacations there, you know? And Mike and I were talking back and forth, we ran some drafts by some personnel in the AG's office, and in fact, I sent you a, an email Tuesday this week, because the lady we're talking with there said, why don't you take this one sentence out, which we did. So the product you have in front of you is an attempt to kind of mimic what the AG does. They, they charge 25 cents a page, we're currently at 15 cents, right?
Yes.
They charge 25 cents a page for a hard copy. And the statute, in fact, says that anything 25 cents a page or less is deemed reasonable. There's no argument. But they also charge 12 and a half cents for emailed copies. So I thought, you know, I'm tired of arguing with people, we'll just do what the AG's office says, and if people don't like it, they can argue if it turns out. So that, that's the intent of this, is trying to get as close as we can to the AG's office. Can't make everybody happy all the time, but we're trying to be fair. And the computer maintenance fee was not designed to penalize anybody. As I said, when it was enacted, it was done to minimize the charge to a category of users at the time, which was, you know, bulk users.
Okay.
Is the 12 and a half cents per page, and it says copy fee, a 12 and a half cents per page you've produced and transmitted to the requesting party electronically. I would read this as being, if you have to scan a document to transfer, if it's already scanned, do you still charge the...
I believe so. I think it's if you, it's how you transmit it. If you transmit it hard copy, it's 25 cents. If you transmit it electronically, it's half that.
Okay.
That was, I think I asked him that, and I think that's what the AG's office said.
So, you know, technically, you could end up with a half cent, so you'd round up.
Yeah, you'd probably round up, or it'd be up to Mike. If he's feel generous, he could drop the half cent again.
Maybe a quarter.
Yeah.
The section on inspection fee and cost of staff time, does that mirror theirs also?
I haven't seen their section on that, but we've had discussion, because we've had some questions raised about staff time, and then we looked for a record, and the record couldn't be located.
Right.
Are we still entitled to charge for staff time? And the AG said, of course you are. And...
So if it's readily available, we don't charge them anything for the so-called inspection fee? But if they got to hunt for it, that's what it says.
Well, yeah.
There shall be no inspection fee charged to the requester.
Yeah, readily available is, I don't know how you define it.
Well, that's, that's what I wondered too.
And it's inspection within the office.
I'm sorry?
On premises.
Well, that makes sense. In either way, you're going to have time involved.
Basically, our ordinance has to comply with state statute too, so that you mirrored the two.
Our ordinance has been reviewed by a member of the AG's office, and not to say that they won't come back later and say, oh, something, I don't know, but they say it's okay.
I'm still not 100% clear on this. So it says the, the cost of staff time will be charged, the records custodian shall be charged with determining the cost of staff time. Isn't that often one and the same? The records custodian is the per staff person that...
Most generally, it is. It is me. However, Kelly might look up something, Jeff might need to be involved in providing those documents, other staff, not only within my office, but throughout other departments if necessary. So that, that staff time is, is what's allocated on that.
Right. So it's your responsibility to determine how much time Kelly spent with Jeff and what it costs.
Not how much time, I, you know, we confer when, when we get requests, and it's determined where these things are going to be assigned, who's, who's going to be responsible for getting those documents. And I communicate with them to, to get an estimate.
Each staff person would, would record the time they spent and report it back, that's how they...
So there'd be some sort of documentation so that you could tie the dollar amount back to them.
My recommendation to Mike was to do like we do in my office, keep track of your time to the tenth of an hour.
Okay. But it's a little messy, because we're charging... But it's a little messy because we're charging them upfront, so we don't really know exactly how much time they spend.
Right, the way it works is that you give them an estimate, what you think it'll cost, and then you, and you don't have to do the search yet, and they pay the estimate.
Right.
Then you do the search.
So, there may be an estimate.
If the estimate was high, you refund money, if the estimate was low, you ask for some more money. I, I, reality, I think a lot of times, Mike goes ahead and does the search, pulls up the document-
Right.
And then keeps, figures out what it took and says, but that's, that's up to him, he doesn't have to do it that way, so.
Okay. Further questions?
But to answer Larry's question, a, a lot of documents, you would, I mean, the city has a scanning and archive system, not all the documents requested are in that system, uh, some of them are like on a staff member's computer, it's a document they created, but didn't feel it was a type of document that needed to be scanned and kept, but the document's been requested, it exists, so they have to go search their computer, find it, and if you, like Kelly, she may have six different drafts of the document, initial version and the one that finally went out. It, it, there's some weird scenarios that are involved.
Yeah, but I could see the time involved in doing that, I just wondered if it's already an electronic file and you convert it to a PDF, is that an hourly charge, or is that like you've already got a PDF that's five pages, do you still charge the twelve and a half cents a page? Or is it that if you have a paper document that came through like a, a contract that we've signed, and now that's gotta be scanned, that, that twelve and a half cents would apply to that document? You know, like, well, some of the contracts we'll sign with KDOT, they'll send out, and we don't have an electronic signature in there, so that would be the twelve and a half cent, but if it's, uh, just a report that we've already got electronically in PDF, is that just straight time?
Well, the, the staff time is in addition to the copy fee.
Right.
And the copy fee is triggered by the method of transmission.
Yeah.
So, if it's been emailed, it's gonna be twelve and a half cents a page, if it's hard copy, it's gonna be twenty-five cents a page.
Further questions, Gary?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, mayor?
No.
Entertaining motion then that the mayor signed the, given permission for the mayor to sign the attached ordinance?
There are actually, there are two ordinances.
Yeah.
One's just appendix D where these are said.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I checked those there. There's a- I know that it relates to, before I, um, Lisa's here.
There's, yeah, there's, uh, Lisa Richard. What is this, what is this here?
Probably-
Oh, okay, this, okay.
Yep.
So, that's for this, okay. All right, so then, it's Lisa Richard?
Hello, everyone. Hi. My name is Lisa Richard, I've introduced myself to you before. I have some background in municipal government and some familiarity with, um, public records laws. It looks like, uh, personally, I'll have to delve into this one a little more, looking at the definition of copy and perhaps seeing what other municipalities in, uh, Kansas do on this particular, um, issue. But if you look at Alaska, I'm sorry, I came from Alaska, we have a similar public records law up there. I'm currently licensed in Alaska, uh, and I'm not here speaking as an attorney, or advising you as an attorney, but, um, talking to you as a citizen of this city and one who, who does have an interest in public records of the state of Kansas and who does and has, um, requested records from you. And I did receive them in electronic format, and I disagree that there is a twelve and a half cent charge for electronic copies by the page. I think that when you send an email and you press a button and a file goes shush to the recipient that you have sent a file, whether it is a five-hundred-page file that flew over the airwaves or a two-page file that flew over the airwaves, the associated cost is going to be, uh, very similar. And yet, the, uh, the cost would be very different if you calculated as a per-page cost. So, I don't think the intent of the Kansas Public Records Act is that the quester be charged those two very different costs. And if the Kansas Attorney General's Office is doing that, then I personally believe that they're wrong. And I would hope that, uh, you know, that, that we can resolve this, uh, simply and reasonably somehow. So, in Alaska, we do have a similar statute, and the way that we handled that in the borough that I worked in was, we did not charge by the page for, uh, public records that were transmitted electronically. We charged for the disc, the CD, whatever the media was that the electronic records were provided on. Sometimes they would ask for multiple files to be loaded onto a particular disc, sometimes enormous amounts of information were requested, and the staff time was tracked and calculated, uh, and they were charged for that. And yet, it was a similar, um, statute, how much more time do I have? And in this particular statute, if you look at forty-five two nineteen of the state statute, under subsection B two, it reads, "In the case of fees for providing access to records maintained on per, on computer facilities, the fees shall include only the cost of any computer services, including staff time required." So, I could see where you could try to construct some costs relating to other things like, um, perhaps, you know, the size of the file that had to go over your, your internet connection or, you know, some things like that, but they would have to relate directly to computers and the cost of maintaining them and the cost of transmitting that, that, transmitting that particular file in that case, and why you had to charge that particular quester in that particular case. And you would need to be tracking those costs and be ready to justify them as actual costs to that quester. So, am I out of time? I still have a minute, okay, I, I'm-
I'm gonna use the problem.
Your bonus time.
I'm not gonna use it up just to use it up. I would not, uh, it would be unfortunate to see, to see this go forward, I guess, I'm, I just feel, I, I don't feel that you'll prevail. I'm not sure what the confusion is with the Attorney General's Office, um, I don't feel they will prevail in the long run, and these things can turn into a real mess, and it's just better not to fight over stupid things like this. It really isn't. You know, it's better sometimes just to, you know, one of the first things that I learned in law school is, just don't go there, you know, don't have the, don't make it legal, just, just work it out. So, that's, that's, let's just do that. Okay, and, uh, thank you very much.
Okay. I think we've got to be fair to the quester of the information, but also to the taxpayers. If somebody's taking a lot of our staff time, I think they need to pay for that. But it's true that if they request a document that's one page or a document that's a thousand pages, some contract with the state, I don't know that it's fair to charge them that much more for a long document if all, if all we have to do is click on it and sit, you know, submit or send. So, I'm, I'm not sure we're not overcharging, just like, like Lisa said, that maybe that's, that's not really appropriate.
Yeah, I could see the additional, the twelve and a half cent if the document is in paper format and staff has to scan it because you've gotta support your scanner, but if it's already a-
But then they need to be keeping track of their time.
Right, the time too.
Right.
But the hourly charges, or the actual cost is given no matter what the format is, the actual cost is charged for the file, but also then, uh, what about with electronic? If it's not emailed, but it needs to be transferred to a, a disc or, uh, an memory drive, we need to recover costs-
Absolutely.
For that, we need to maybe add in, uh, the rates, something to address, uh, reimbursable or materials that would be included. Copying, you, you're getting your paper fee, but when it comes to electronic, you've got the CD, if you're gonna label it or a thumb drive, the cost for that.
Do we do a lot of requests like that?
I have not, feeling for my case, so far.
So, it's my, mainly just email?
It's either been, it's mostly email, and there's been a few that, that have came in and picked it up, and there's also-
Picked it up on what though?
Paper copies, no, paper copies.
Except for video.
Uh, and, and the videos of, of the, the meetings.
They went on a CD.
Yeah, and, and Larry provides that, uh, and we've had a couple come in and actually review the documents onsite that were readily available.
How are we charging for the, the DVD or the CD?
Uh, just straight up what Larry charges us for it.
Okay.
For a copy of it, which is a dollar a copy.
I'm sure is way too much. I, I like the idea of following, I hate to reinvent the wheel, if the Attorney General's Office says this is a good way to do it, then I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of doing it, but as Lisa pointed out, they, this doesn't quite make sense to me to charge that much more for a huge document than it does for a one-pager when it's electronics, electronically done. And again, I wanna be fair to both parties, I wanna be fair to the taxpayers, you know, that we're recovering the cost of the city staff's time, but, um-
Excuse me. I haven't thought this through, but some of the times, actually getting that doc, thousand-page document into one document could take, may have taken time, so you have to be recovering that time.
Well, I think we should charge them for all the time we spend.
Right.
I mean, every minute we spend, I think, to be fair to everybody, we need to charge them for that.
And so, that's why we wouldn't know if, say, if this document was, this thousand-page document was done two years ago. But it's just sitting there ready that if somebody wants it, we could, it's like, it's a push of a button, there it is. But it took maybe, uh, then, two years ago, staff time to put that together, maybe not, maybe it was just clicked on it and it PDF'd the whole file, and it didn't take much time, we just don't, wouldn't know that.
But if, if they spent the time two years ago, the quester shouldn't pay for that time, just what it costs now for our employees to gather the information requested.
I mean, that's a legitimate way to look at it, I'm just saying, if you're-
Brad, what do you think?
Well, I actually think that, you know, this is an attempt to get us in line with what, uh, Attorney General is doing, whether or not they prevail or not, I don't know, I'm an attorney. But, uh, it seems to me like, you know, we can try this, if it doesn't work, we can come back and did it, I mean, I, I think every time I go copy something somewhere, it's not, it doesn't, they charge you something. Regardless, I mean, recouping time, I don't think is a question, I think what's an appropriate amount.
I think the, the time is pretty clear, no matter what it is, that actual time is a recoverable charge. The question would be for, uh, already an electronic file, do you charge per sheet, or do you look at it recovering a cost of twelve and a half cents for scanning a, a page that's in paper copy to convert to a digital copy? You know, do we wanna just add another line, or just the twelve and a half cent would be a scanned fee per page? And you're still gonna get your hourly charge for the, uh, the staff to sit there and feed the paper through the scanner, that's still an actual cost, that's billable, but you wouldn't add twelve and a- or you, then you would charge an additional twelve and a half cents for scanning.
So, it could cost more than the twelve and a half cents, from what you're saying.
It will definitely charge the time, it's just like running a copy, the fif- the twenty-five cents we're charging for copies doesn't include the staff operating time for the copy, that's just a machine and the paper.
Right, where to check.
And we do the same for scanning a document, it'd still be the hourly charge of the actual time the staff scanned it, plus the twelve and a half cents for the document, the, the scanner service, but if it's already a digital file, then it's the hours or the time the staff would spend looking for it, preparing the email and transferring it. All that would be a, an expense to the city and to the quester.
I was cautioned that whatever we do charge ultimately cannot be related to overhead, the cost of computer software, the cost of the scanner and all that, there's two components, the cost of staff time and then copy, copies. And by statute, if you charge twenty-five cents per copy or less, it's presumed reasonable. Now, I, I would probably recommend against making a distinction on whether or not something had to be scanned in, because that would be caught up, your staff time would cover that. If you wanna charge less, I just use the twelve and a half cents, to be honest, when the AG's office told me they charged per page for emailing, I was a little surprised too, but they, they do, and I'm just tired of arguing with people. So, I figured, if I do what the AG's office, if we do what the AG's office does, I'd say, go argue with them, we've got better things to do, you know, if you wanna charge less than what the AG's office charges, I don't see how anybody can argue with that, if you wanna reduce that or do away with the transmission, you know, the per-page on the electric transmission, you can do away with that, and I don't think anybody will complain, but I, I, I put it in there because that's what the AG does.
Okay.
I didn't dream it up.
I just, um, I just know because my copier is a piece of junk, jams every other, you know, I'm scanning ten sheets, it jams five times, and I know that there is a cost of wear and tear on equipment every time you run a scan or print a copy, that's why I think they charge so much per copy, it's not for the paper, obviously, so.
Well, we're not supposed to charge for overhead, though, that's what they say.
Cost of a copier is considered overhead?
Yeah.
Well, that's ridiculous, they're charging for it in the twenty-five cents a sheet.
We cost them, you're, you're, you know, you're paying for the paper and ink, I guess.
Yeah, pretty expensive paper, right?
Well, district courts charge fifty cents a page, so there you go.
Well, I think twelve cents is a little high for copy that doesn't, we may not even have to make a copy, we may click on a file, there might be an eight-hundred-page contract with the state, so, I guess I, I feel like that, like Lisa said, that's a little high. But I'm, I'm-
I'm just saying, eliminate item A then.
That'd be the ordinance on appendix D only.
Yeah, appendix D, right.
Say it again, Jeff, that'd be one.
We have two ordinances, one amends ordinance forty-one eighty-nine, and that's-
And then the next one?
The next ordinance is the ordinance that amends appendix D, and the only thing really in appendix D is the-
Cost.
Copy costs, I think. And there are two categories, one for copies electronically transmitted and one component for copies, for hard copies.
So, is that what you were meaning, Gary, to-
I'm sure that's exactly what I meant.
So, just eliminate A, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
We can reprint that tomorrow.
Can we?
If you want to adopt it tonight, we can reprint it.
So, we'd actually have two motions, would be the-
One for each ordinance.
Yeah, one for forty-one eighty-nine, then one for the appendix D ordinance, or code, correct?
Yeah, yes.
All right, so, would it be a motion then to approve the forty-one eighty-nine?
Uh, it's the ordinance that-
The amend.
Yeah, amends.
Yeah, amend forty-one eighty-nine.
I make a motion that we authorize the mayor to sign the ordinance that amends existing ordinance forty-one eighty-nine.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, then, uh- Okay, then entertain a motion then to amend the Appendix D to the city code pertaining to fees for inspections and copying of open records, public records. Any motion on that one?
I'll make a motion that we authorize the mayor to sign the amended Appendix D with the exclusion of item A.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor then, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, so we've got that one taken care of. All right, next one is, consider adopting a pay resolution as budgeted.
Yeah, Mayor and Commissioners, we're requesting that you look at the compensation pay plan and adjust it by two percent. As noted there, this was budgeted in this fiscal year for twenty-seventeen, but has not been implemented yet, so that's what we're proposing. And as you can see, the estimated impact on the twenty-seven budget is just over forty-six thousand dollars.
Okay.
And just, just to make it clear, too, it adjusts the pay plan, those, but it also gives every employee a two percent COLA, cost of living increase.
Questions? Okay.
No.
All right, I entertain a motion then to authorize the mayor to sign the two thousand seventeen pay resolution. Could there be a motion?
Sure, I move that we adopt the pay resolution as budgeted.
I'll second the motion.
All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, item E is to consider an agreement with PEC for engineering services relating to improvements at the water treatment plant.
As you know, we're moving forward with the water treatment plan improvements, and you met with Sarah, Andrew came last time to talk about this agreement, and it's on the agenda for approval and to allow, authorize the mayor to sign that. Sarah is here, if you have any questions.
Sir?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I do need to start with an apology about the contract. I have looked through this and realized that the amount that's included in here is for our design, our concept fees, our inspection, or our concept stuff, all of our inspection of the existing settling basin, the funding, all of that stuff. But the line item for the twenty-four weeks of inspection did not get included in here. So this is what I would, I'll entertain, obviously, answer any questions you have about the specifics of any of the contract. But to resolve that issue, we can do one of two things. We can go through this, you know, again at your next meeting, I can send you revised contract, or we can strike that out of here completely and do either separate agreement or separate contracts strictly for inspection, and that can be a, just a standard hourly plus reimbursable expenses of mileage to get someone here, and make that as a not-to-exceed maximum in the contract. So we can do that one of two ways, and I sincerely apologize if this was incorrect when it was sent to you the other day, so.
I noticed you addressed the inspection in the body of the contract, but if you're going to say that the seventy-six thousand three hundred doesn't include it.
Correct.
Then it would be nice to actually see a schedule of the services per point, because as we do them, we're looking at phases, and yet by a lump sum, we have no idea where we are in the individual phases. We discussed looking at the various components, the electrical is one package of project, the basin and the building, and then the controls. By just having one price, when you're billing us, not that there would be an error, but we don't know where we are percentage-wise for each part, so I'd like to see that actually listed as each phase, the amount for the phase, so as we're billing, we'll know where we are in each phase. Also, do you mind if I go ahead with some other items?
I can redress that question, or we can keep moving forward, and I can talk at the end, either way's fine.
Okay.
Whatever you want to do. My only, yeah, so that's fine, we can certainly do that. What we can do is, the way that we've broken this contract out, as far as the scope of work, is we have, all the electrical work is included, so we know that obviously is the priority. So the electrical work, which includes getting the electrical service and the main connections and all that, out of the floodplain, dealing with the MCC equipment and the filter building, and then all of the upgrades that Pedrati has recommended on the plant site, and then at the remote sites, the towers, lift stations and such, all of that is included, all the way through design, bidding, and construction administration. So all of that is included in the scope right now. Then what we have are, since we're not a hundred percent sure how that's all going to, you know, shake out cost-wise, is that this contract right now only includes looking at concepts for the other projects. So for example, this includes just developing concept plans and cost estimates for the addition of the break room restroom facilities, the same for fencing, security options around the facility, and then it also includes taking a look at the existing settling basin, draining that down, you know, taking a good inspect and look at that, doing a little bit of testing to determine what we can do to repair it, or if, you know, we need to step back and look at other options. So if you'd like, what we can do is, we can certainly break this contract out to say, this is how much is for the electrical, you know, design, bidding, construction administration, and then this is how much it is for all the concept piece of it. And then the other thing we have in here, of course, is going through the rest of the loan process with you to get all the documentation together that's included in that process. So if you want us to break it out by task, we can certainly do that, that's not a problem.
I don't, I don't know if it'd have to be individual tasks, but at least the four steps, you know?
The four big pieces of the contract, sure.
Like in electrical, you don't need to do concept design, because.
No.
When you go to that billing, you'll bill schematic design, design development, working drawings, bidding, and contract administration, so all those will be based upon percentages, I would assume, and, you know, normally, there's a fee schedule that indicates what percent will be done as you complete each phases, so, you know, with that breakdown, if you could use that.
Sure.
The state, are you familiar with the state of Kansas projects? How they kind of break down each billing?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it really just shows us all where we're at.
Sure, not a problem.
The price that's quoted here, you're saying that's not correct, because it doesn't include all the inspections?
Doesn't include the inspection services. What we had listed in the scope was twenty-four weeks of someone being here full-time, and that value is not included in that seventy-six thousand.
So how much more might that go up? Do you know that?
I was looking, when I realized the mistake, when I was sitting here earlier, I looked at what our costs were that we gathered from our inspection services, and it looks like for twenty-four weeks, now that's somebody being here eight hours a day, five days a week, twenty-four weeks of timeframe, is probably around eighty to ninety thousand for a full-time inspection. So if you remember, in our, now again, that's somebody being here eight hours a day, full-time during that construction. Which is why the idea of doing it as a not-to-exceed and just do a standard hourly is kind of nice, because you get into the construction, and, you know, maybe your contractor's doing an awesome job, and really you just need somebody to come out here and check on them once a week. You know, that's a very different fee, and so then if that's all we really end up needing, then that's all you use, is this amount of that not-to-exceed, so we won't go over that amount, but we'll just use it as needed as we go along.
I would think, looking at the scope of work, that an eight-hour-a-day, five-day-a-week is way overkill, that periodic inspection could cover it, you know, we're, we're looking at electrical components that are not going to be concealed, and a lot of it's tear out and put in, it's very, very simple, and, you know, periodic inspection is more in line, even on the, if we progress into the concrete basin, periodic would be more appropriate than eight-hour-a-day. And one of the things, in your description of the construction phase, with that, you said that the staff would just observe or participate? I think that the progress meeting should be conducted by your staff.
Typically, what we require is that progress meetings are conducted by the contractor, they're in charge of putting these together, we will attend to all of them and be part of all of that, and we usually leave it up to the contractor to schedule them and get things set up, so that they, you know, they're telling us all what's going on, but we participate in all of those, all of those progress meetings, yes.
I could see some direction at the start needing to be done by your engineer.
Yes.
So that, you know, it's, I've, I've seen it both ways, and, you know, I think the lead to make sure that we're staying on track and getting what we need is a strong engineer.
We always do a pre-construction meeting, so at the very beginning, before anything ever gets done onsite, materials order, nothing happens until we do a pre-construction meeting. And at that pre-construction meeting, we go through every detail of the project, from the contract, the dates, the submittals, how everything's supposed to work communication-wise, who's going to be onsite, you know, all of that stuff, and set up those progress meetings, when those are going to occur, how often, typically we do monthly, just depends on the project, though, if it necessitates more or less. So we set all of that up at the very beginning of the project, before anything starts, and then as those progress meetings occur, of course, we're in constant communication during construction with our contractor, inspector, with city staff, to make sure things are going the way they're supposed to. But then we attend all those progress meetings to make sure things are moving along the way they're supposed to, yeah.
And a pre-bid conference?
Mm-hmm.
Is that part of your package, too?
Yes, we would do a pre-bid conference, and on the electrical, that's going to be pretty important, I think. One thing I know that Sean Schrader, our electrical engineer, talked about last time was that it'll be nice, you can switch things over fairly easily, you know, kind of one building at a time during that, but I think that having a pre-bid conference to make contractors aware of what that process will look like and what our thoughts are, and have them really get a good feel for what your system is like right now will help in that, so yeah, we would definitely do a pre-bid conference on the electrical side.
And even on, on this project, might consider a mandatory pre-bid conference?
Yes, yeah, we do that quite often.
Yeah. One of the other things, it was like item I, you talked about, to deliver the owner tracings of the completed plans and copies of electronic data files, as may be requested. I think the PDF of the drawings and specifications are more important now than, than a paper copy, and that should take precedent over the tracings. Then that leads on into the other parts, as the project goes on, that I think we should have, I think it's, let's see, on page nine, the continuation of item B, deliverables including electronic data, again, you're talking about CAD files formatted, depends on our software, PDFs are much more applicable, and also then including as-built drawings at the end of the project. We need to make sure that's stated, as well as PDFs of all shop drawings and binders on the project, and any correspondence or submittals, so at the, when the project's done, we'll have accurate record to go back for future work, so.
Yeah, that's all part of our normal process, so as far as all the documentation during design and when we get to final plans, we can supply that to you however you like. Some people like to have hard copies. Most of the time, people like, you know, PDFs as we go through the design, and then when you get to the final, they want, you know, a couple of hard copies to have around, but we can supply whatever you prefer, half-size, full-size, PDFs, whatever you prefer for all that. And then once we get into construction, all the documentation that we get, just like you mentioned, all the art, requestor information, all the pay applications, all the submittals, all of those things, we will get electronically, and we will provide all those to you. We have a software system, it's called Neuforma, and it's basically a different way of, instead of like an FTP site where you just have to go download, we submit all that stuff to you, and you just click on a link, and it opens up zip files, and you can put them wherever you want to. So that's what we typically do, is do it all through that program, so you will get electronic copies of everything that we receive from the contractor.
I think that should be included in the contract, though, that we.
Sure.
We get those electronic files, so we'll know where we are. I think it's something that is really critical in our building construction, we definitely, and.
Absolutely.
If we don't put it in the contract, we'll have a tendency to miss on our part of.
Sure.
What we're, we're getting.
Yeah, that's no problem. Like I said, that's our standard procedure, so we'll just add language into this section that notes those things specifically.
My other, we already talked about the onsite inspection, and the breakdown of the costs, so. And I think that's kind of the questions or the comments I had in your, your contract, that, you know, for, for our interest, I think we definitely need to be real specific on what we get, and.
Certainly.
Because this is something that, as we make the repairs and go back, that we can set up libraries, you know, three-ring binders of the shop drawings, but digital copies, too.
Yeah, the other thing that we'll require when we get through construction is operation and maintenance manuals for everything that's installed, and again, that's the same kind of way, if you want a hard copy and a, you know, PDF file on a disk or a jump drive, or if you just want PDFs, however you want to handle it, you know, we can have the contractor supply whatever you prefer.
So you're going to bring back an amended contract for us?
Yep.
To approve the twenty-seventh?
Yes, I will bring this, I will send you a contract with all the things broken out like we just discussed, and the corrected amount, and then, and what we'll do, I'll just have it all in one contract, so it'll be two different amounts, one will be for, we'll break it out by the tasks in here, and then a second number in there will be the not-to-exceed for inspection, and then we can use it at your discretion. Again, you know, city staff, a lot of times, when they're around all day long, they can kind of look at things, and if they have an issue with something, they can give us a call, and we can send somebody out, in addition to just weekly, or however we decide to do it. So that's available as well.
Sarah, can you talk about the, the grant assistance you said that was included in this contract, and then if we wanted additional grant assistance, you said it would be an additional thousand dollars, and maybe when you bring that back, maybe you could clarify that as well, so that they would have that as an option?
Do you want me to go ahead and talk about that now, or just in the next contract?
Would you like her to talk about it?
Okay, sure. Yeah, and what Kelly and I had discussed was, the last time we were here, we talked about the idea of potential grant, you know, options available. And so what we can do with what we've noted here already is, take a look and just see what options are out there, what things you might qualify for, and include that here. If you decide to go forward with anything more than that, like wanting us to go through and actually talk to all the agencies and pull all the paperwork, you know, and start pulling all that stuff together that you would need to be able to apply for them, then we would ask for some additional funds on top of this. But this includes doing that initial review of what grant options are out there available for you, for the city your size, for, you know, the projects you're doing, all that kind of stuff, so that would be, that's already included in this, and we'll go ahead and add a statement into this clarifying that as well.
Okay. That sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, real good idea.
And so I'll have this contract back to you, Kelly, the first part of next week, and then do you want me to go ahead and I'll come back then on the twenty-seventh as well?
Twenty-seventh, yeah.
We need to put her in the beginning of the agenda, just.
So she can.
All right. It's okay, I drove, okay, so I knew there was no construction this time, because I was in Joplin for a track meet last weekend, so I knew everything was clear this time. Very good, all right, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Item F is considered authority to award a resolution and related payments regarding to the Peter Pan Main Intersection Improvement Project.
Yeah, Mayor, I think you're all familiar with this project. Again, this is good news, as the bids that came in for this project were lower than the engineer's estimate, and that results in savings for us as well. And I'll also point out that Michael Bailey is here also from Trans Systems that can answer any questions regarding this, and especially if there's any confusion about the city's share, which is, this motion would approve of paying the two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars, but it's not the total amount we need to, that we would owe on this project, and Michael can speak to that as well. So, and you do have a schedule in your packet, it's called an invoice, that shows that two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollar figure where it comes from, city funds. If there's any questions, me and Michael can answer them.
It's a very good deal that the bids came in a lot less, considerably less, of course our share was considerably less, too, so. Of course, our share was considerably less, too, so.
The one other item that changed in there is throughout design, the KDOT share was $650,000, and before it went to bid, that was up to $700,000. So that offset $50,000 of those dollars also. So that was something they added in there right before the project was led.
Look, can you explain the difference between the $365,000, $276,000 and the $247,000 our share? Is the 365 the total that's owed, and we're just paying the 247 now?
The 247 is included in the 365. Right now, in the city's budget, you know, that we've worked through during design and updated as we've gone through estimates, should be the 300 or the $638,000. So that's what is in the budget for this project right now. And that was, so in the invoice you see from KDOT for the 247, that is included in those numbers there. The $638, that includes the design fee, right-of-way fee, construction inspection, and then the construction costs, and the city's obligated anything over the $700,000. So a couple of things, you know, the right-of-way was much less than what was originally estimated. The inspection was less, obviously the construction bid was less. So that's why you see the difference between the $638 and the 365. So 365 is the cost, the total cost from the city from the very beginning to throughout the end of construction. So it's about, you know, almost $300,000 of a difference just by those different items being added up. So the 365 number you see includes that 247, that's the 121, and then the 824 number minus the $700,000, that's the, the 247 is included in it. So the 365 is the total cost to the city, including what the, is on the agenda tonight, so.
So after we pay the 247, all that we'll owe on the project is the difference between the 365 and the 247?
And, kind of like we, in the emails earlier today, this does not include any change orders that would come up during construction. This is just, yeah, this is just to get the project awarded and then move into construction, and then anything else is on that. Kind of as explained in the budget impact, since there is, the budget is $638,000, it's kind of in discussion with, you know, the city manager, you know, the city may, you know, have a contingency fund in there, or you could leave it at the $638,000 budget until the end of construction. We don't anticipate there's going to be $300,000 in, but, you know, we kind of, you know, would recommend, you know, $80,000 stuff there, just in case anything does come up. So it's already budgeted, not, you know, spent on something else, then we have to come back and, you know, find funds to cover those fees.
So what will the $118,276 that we still owe relate to?
Well, the PE, the design fee, you've already paid.
Right.
That was our contract, so you've already paid that, so that's $88,000.
Just looking at the two numbers, I know I'm getting you confused. We got two numbers, 365, 276. There was, the city's share has been reduced to a current value of $365,276.79. Okay. And it says, "We recommend that the city maintain a contingency fund of $80,000 for any additional construction or CE costs." Therefore, the revised share is, but then where we're paying the 247 that comes out of the 365?
Yes. And that would include that contingency. And there's also a KDOT administration fee, that's what the $22,000 is, so it's
So the $118,276 that will get billed at the end of the project relates to, is that construction costs? Is that engineering? Or?
Which number are you looking at to come up to the 118?
Well, you take the 365, subtract the 247 off of it.
And then you should track out the $88,000, which you've already spent, because that's, that was our contract for the design, so you've already spent that money. So that's, you've already
So we don't owe the 118?
No, you don't owe that. It's, the other item in there is the KDOT administration fee, that's the $22,000, that goes through construction. So you don't owe additional $88,000 or $118,000, you've already spent that, or, you know, paid that out during the design phase. And then the right-of-way cost, I think, has the right-of-way, the right-of-ways all been purchased, and I think that's, that's in the progress of getting paid. I mean, it was much lower than the $29,000 that was estimated, so. So that's another cost that's already been, been paid by the city.
Seems like fantastic news to me. Cost came in lower, the state's paying more than they said they would.
Our cost went
Twice tonight.
Yeah.
Previously, I thought the state was broke. We should take the money now and run, because I have a hard time believing this. This is great news.
Okay. So we entertain a motion then to award a resolution prepared by KDOT to award the bid to B and B Bridge Company in the amount of $824,679, and pay the current city share of construction and CE totaling $247,000.
Was that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. All those, any other questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's a good one to get going, too. And I noticed that it started on pin.
Yeah.
All right, reports are next.
We have your additional item.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, gee, All Wheels Night request.
Yeah, they are requesting to block off the 100 and 200 blocks of West Myrtle between 7:30 and 9:00 on July 21st for the All Wheels Night.
Okay, that's Friday night, next Friday night.
Yeah, we didn't get this in time. We got it after the packets were already out, so that's why it's an extra item.
Other question? Question, anybody?
No, they had a lot of cars.
Yeah, they had, last time they had a lot of cars. It was fun to go down there. There was a lot of cars. So there'll be a motion then to approve the request to, we're actually closing off the 200-block of West Myrtle.
Is that the motion, or are you asking?
No, I'm asking, would there be a motion to close?
Sure. I move that we authorize the 100 and 200 blocks of West Myrtle Street to be closed between 7:30 and 9:00 PM on Friday, July 21st, for All Wheels Night.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Now we're ready for city reports or board minutes. Any questions about the Recreation Commission? Commission comments, then? Carrie?
Yeah. Last meeting, we had the presentation from Andy Pitts on the City Hall and Public Safety Center for the Steering Committee's recommendation to take that to the next step of accepting it and looking how to proceed with the public forums. What are we going to set a discussion for that, a commission meeting, or just to keep things going along with it? What's our next step?
Well, we were doing a debt analysis, Craig. Then after we got that debt analysis, then they were going to try to put together a presentation for, you know, what the committee had recommended. Then, and I'm not, I mean, I'm just going by recollection here, then here's what you, you know, if you choose to do the full project, here's what you can do, here's what the city debt structure looks like. And then, then basically it'll be up to us then. And let the community hear what the, what the options are, both in terms of what the committee recommended as far as the, you know, remodeling city hall and building a new building. Then that cost was 15, 16 million, I think it was, without having that document here. Then how do you, how, what are the options to make this happen, if that's the direction that we go? Then let the community have their say-so in it, and then hopefully from there, you know, we have a clear opinion. If not, then we have to make some choices, do some prioritizing, see what, what we can do in conjunction with budgets, how does it all fit together?
Okay, good. So we're going to get the debt analysis underway.
Yeah, speaking of that, I was just going to say, speaking of that, we, six proposals, I think we got, or seven, I can't, yeah, something like that. And we will bring back to the commission at the next commission meeting to accept one of those proposals.
Okay, great. So we're kind of looking roughly, we've got the Steering Committee recommendation in the study. We're going to get the debt analysis put together so we can look at figures, as well as then with our budget and looking at existing expenses, then be ready. Okay. We're just kind of, you know, after the presentation, I just want to make sure we're going ahead.
Don't want to let it drop.
Yeah, yeah. Also, the status of the rate study for water sewer, after Lochner's presentation, I think we were kind of all confused with what we had. Are we going to get back together and go over that, or have they been in communication to answer questions, Mike, that you had?
Right now, I have not talked to Lochner on that. Terry and I have been working on that, along with Kelly and Craig, getting his involvement in it. Had to kind of stop a little bit to make some additional progress on the budget, but we'll be getting back into that.
Sure. Yeah, it just, it seemed like some of the information in the rate study was more confusing than what I had anticipated. It seemed like an easier task to take expensive.
It's terribly complicated to even understand what we're looking at number-wise. I mean, that equity part of it was, I'm not sure I still understand it, understand the concept.
Craig figured it out in 30 seconds.
When I read that, I'd never seen that in a water sewer rate study, and I've seen a lot of them, and it took me a while, but as I read through it, I got the logic of what, what it meant, what he was trying to do, but it was confusing. I don't think you really need it.
Yeah. Yeah, the main thing is you've got to look at your expenses and what it costs to produce and how much you're going to sell and
Well, the other concern there, too, is that we're halfway through the year, and there was a proposed budget increase or rate increase that we haven't adopted yet. And that fund was tight anyway, so, you know.
That probably ought to be looked at quickly.
Yeah.
Because getting some additional revenues better than
Yeah, that's, we've talked about it a lot, and Terry has been doing a good job holding off, I mean, trying to really be cognizant of that fact, that that rate increase was budgeted but not implemented. And so he's been tight with the money so far, but that's, the top three things that Mike had to do was the budget and the water rate study.
And come into a new position to get familiar with everything on top of that. And I just, we, we kind of failed to keep pushing Lochner and our review to get this thing going, like you said, Fred. I, I never thought we would be halfway through the year and still not have a
It's just lingered, yeah. It's just lingered.
But those were the only things that I had.
Gary, you said it again, everything? I'm good, too. So we have public concerns, Debbie Miller, constitutional rights.
At the last commission meeting, I made a request to address the commission about Cora, the Kansas Open Records Act. Instead of being allowed to do so when that agenda was being under discussion, as all other individuals have been allowed to do, Mayor Meyer may need wait until the end of the meeting to make my comments. The Constitution has guaranteed American citizens certain rights and protections. Furthermore, Section 1983 of Title 42 of the U.S. Code, which is part of the Civil Rights Act of 1871, has allowed citizens whose civil rights have been violated by entities such as a city of independence to seek monetary relief for those violations. What's more, the Supreme Court has held a seemingly generous position towards plaintiffs obtaining prevailing party status in such suits, which has often proved costly for defendants. According to an attorney familiar with civil rights laws, the city has violated my civil rights on numerous occasions, many of which still fall within the statutes of limitation. Included or documented acts of discrimination, such as a city's fees for some of my Cora requests, its inequitable enforcement of its agenda policy, and Mr. Meyer's action at the last commission meeting. It's absolutely incredulous that a city in such dire financial straits would risk a federal lawsuit because some city officials have chosen to continuously violate a citizen's civil rights. It's inexplicable that all other city officials, especially city attorney Jeff Chubb, have sat idly by in deafening silence and allowed it to happen. Mr. Whitehead's identified integrity as one of the core values of city government. However, integrity may not truly become a core value of this city government until three things happen. First, city officials must start obeying all laws. They should have been doing this anyway. This may decrease the likelihood of costly and completely avoidable lawsuits being filed against the city. Secondly, citizens must see the back end of a commissioner who's used his seat of honor on their commission to disrespect their fellow citizens and violate their civil rights. Thankfully, the November election will resolve that despicable situation. Lastly, Mr. Whitehead must engage a city attorney that will ensure the city obeys all laws and will conduct himself and/or herself in city business with the utmost integrity. That means Jeff Chubb must go. The dedicated efforts of some citizens have rid their city of an unscrupulous city manager and shined a bright light on actions of their equally unscrupulous city government. Now we citizens must support Mr. Whitehead, so integrity becomes ingrained in every single official and interwoven in every, every action they take. Thank you.
Okay. We don't have any further business to discuss, then. We entertain a motion then to adjourn for this evening.
I'll make a motion and we adjourn.
Second. All of the favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Sign our documents and go home.